We will now open this evening's meeting, special meeting of the Salem City Council for September 29th, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki? Absent. Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Present.
Counselor Clem? Absent. And Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item of business is the approval of the special meeting agenda. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And we need a motion for approval of additions and deletions, which I saw at our place when we arrived. Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move approval of additions, deletions, and revisions to the council agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Claussen to approve the additions, deletions, and revisions to this evening's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for council and city manager comment. Are there comments from any of our counselors this evening? We have counselor, we have comment from our city manager?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. All right. We'll move right along into public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? I don't see anyone signed up. Was anyone here this evening, is anyone here this evening who would like to comment on agenda items other than our public hearing item? No? All right. We'll move along. We now will have a motion regarding the next item on the agenda, the resolutions. Is that correct, Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move staff recommendation on item 3.2A.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move, to adopt the resolution regarding item 3.2A. Is there discussion? Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution that decreases the amount of daily, or that reduces the daily fee for temporary daily parking permit from $5 to $3 during the time period of October 6th until February 3rd. The, there are whole, you have a staff report on this, but I think kind of the bottom line is we are making some changes to guarantee that there is both available and less expensive parking in the downtown area for the holiday season. This one in particular is aimed at encouraging employees of downtown businesses to move off the street into the parking garages, making way for customers that support their wages and the local economy.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, oh yes, Counselor Rogers?
Yes, I think, I didn't ask staff this first, but I think it'd be appropriate for maybe an explanation on how people buy these three dollar permits and what it looks like when they do it and how it works.
John Wales, Urban Development Director. What, in talking with the businesses downtown, what we envision is that the employers could buy, now have the opportunity to buy a batch of tickets either for a week or a month or for whatever a time period, and that they would be, they would be identified as good through February 3rd, so they could choose on how they wanted to allocate them, but then issue them to their employees, and they had flexibility as to whether they would like to pay for that cost for their employees, or share that cost, or make them available to their employees. But we think it's going to work best, rather than having every employee come up and buying a daily pass at our PAC center. And I think what the businesses suggested also is that this would be a good opportunity for, it will probably work more effectively if the employers are the ones that purchase it. So we're going to be communicating that directly, if this is approved tonight, with the business community downtown and helping them through that process.
Thank you very much. I have a question regarding those permits. Are those required on Saturdays and Sundays as well?
They will be, yes.
They will be. So it's seven days a week?
Not on Sunday. Not on Sunday.
Not on Sunday.
But Saturdays.
Saturdays.
Six days a week.
Six days a week.
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. And we have a public hearing this evening. Would the recorder please introduce this public hearing?
Yes. The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of resolution number 2014-64, which contains written findings in support of an exemption from the competitive bidding process and authorizes the use of a RFP process for a public improvement contract for the purchase and installation of new parking control technology.
Thank you. And we have a staff report?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. City Counselors, Sarah Long, Project Manager with the Urban Development Department. And before you tonight is an exemption that's tied to the new parking meter technology for the Capitol Mall. As you may recall, back in 2013, council actually approved moving forward with the project, and then just this last August, council then approved the funding source for the project itself. Since that time, staff has been working with our purchasing department to work through our procurement documentation and how we're going to move forward. And in going through that process, typically in purchasing equipment, we would be going through a goods and services procurement, which would be an RFP process, so we could base it on different qualifications. However, due to the actual installation of the upcoming equipment, it actually becomes a public improvement project, so that requires a competitive bidding process. And once all the specs are met, the determining factor of the competitive bidding process is low-cost bid, is selected. So what we're asking tonight is actually to do an exemption of that and to go through an RFP process. The benefit to going through the RFP process is actually that as the city will have the ability to select a vendor, not only based on what the cost is, but we can also look at factors such as vendor qualifications, references, previous projects, and one of the most important things is how the new equipment is going to integrate with our existing systems, and also how all the new equipment will integrate together, because we'll also be looking at not only the parking meter technology, but also the handheld devices. So we want to make sure that everything syncs as well together as possible, and by doing this, we feel like it'll probably be our most successful mechanism to do that. Because of the ORS, there's a number of findings that we have to make as staff in order to proceed with asking for an exemption. There's about 22 of them, based on some new laws that have come forth in July. However, there's two major ones that I want to bring to your attention and make sure you're aware of how we've completed those findings. The first one is, does the exemption encourage favoritism or diminish the competition? And in reviewing, staff found that no, this is not the case. The only thing that this will do is the same amount of people that could apply and provide proposals for a competitive bidding process would be able to do the same through the RFP. The only change is that staff will have the ability to look at the determining factors for the criteria, as opposed to just cost. The second one is, does the exemption result in a substantial cost savings to the city? And staff found that yes, this would be the case, mostly because it's going to maximize our opportunity for selection of a qualified vendor and minimize the risk for project delay or complications due to selecting a vendor based on price, as opposed to their overall qualifications. The remaining findings and what staff found in terms of responses is included in your staff report. Several of those are repetitive, so you can go ahead and review those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about those if you have them. So in closing, what we're really asking is just for that exemption. City council does act as the local contractor view board, so that's how you would be acting this evening if you were to approve the exemption. And if that were the case, the schedule would be that we would be hoping to release an RFP in October. We would give vendors eight weeks to submit their proposals, so they'd be due sometime in December, and then we would hope to be back in front of you actually in February. At that point, we'd hope to have someone selected contracting underway, and we'd be providing an information report so that you know where we are in the project. After that, we're hoping to have installation started and all the integrations into the systems done by July of 2015. So the systems would be integrated by July, and the installation would then start on the street in July of 2015.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to see if we have anyone signed up for this public hearing. I don't see anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wanted to speak during this public hearing and was not able to get on the sign-up sheet? I don't see anyone, so what I'm going to do is ask Ms. Long to come back up to the microphone to see if there are any questions from any of the counselors. You have satisfied their every question. Well done. All right. No questions. Thank you very much. We will close this public hearing and begin deliberation. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the council adopt resolution number 2014-64.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to adopt the resolution 2014-64. All those in favor, excuse me, is there discussion? No? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Our next public hearing does not need to be announced by our recorder. It is one that was approved, excuse me. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I move to approve the vacation of the public rights of way as identified in the staff report, subject to the conditions as recommended by staff.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. And is there discussion, Counselor Bennett, or questions of staff?
I have no discussion.
All right. I remember that we did not have questions of staff on this item in the last public hearing, because we kept the record open, so I want to be sure that if there are any questions that counselors have, that we have the time now to explore those questions. Yes? And Counselor Rogers has questions? Let's see, first, as a courtesy, let's see which staff person is going to be with us. Hello? I think it's you.
Hello. My name is Judy John Def. I'm an associate transportation planner with the Public Works Department.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Judy, I guess my first question is probably crazy, but a rideaway, a vacation of a rideaway, who, I realize this is state property prior to the hospital and their tax exemption and all of that, but if this was in a situation where private property was involved, who would own that piece of property?
You mean the area that will be vacated?
Yes.
So if it's a private property, most times, it depends on how the rideaway was dedicated to the city to start with. In most cases, it will split 50/50 down the middle. Half would go to one property and half would go to another property. Sometimes, it just really depends on how.
So the private folks that were splitting it at that time or prior to it, still in a rideaway, are they paying taxes on that piece of property?
As, when it's rideaway, they're not paying taxes on it.
Okay. Thanks. And then my follow-up question would be, is the sidewalk that we're having them build, how long is that sidewalk? How, how many feet?
It's about 320 feet long.
At $120,000?
Yes. It extends from Mission Street all the way up to the entrance of Pringle Park.
It's a pretty expansive sidewalk, isn't it?
Yes. It includes the rideaway, you know, actually the cost of the rideaway that would be dedicated by the hospital, as well as construction of the sidewalk, of the eight-foot sidewalk, and then the landscaping as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Benars?
I just wanted, less of a question, more of a statement. I just wanted to let the public know that we had received considerable amount of written testimony, as we had held the record open, and I want to let people know that we have read those documents thoroughly, and they're part of the record at this point. I just want to make sure people don't think we're not listening to them.
All right. Any further comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. All right. Counselor Bennett, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've stated my motion to, what did I want to do? I want to move to approve the vacation of the public rightofway as identified in the staff report, subject to the conditions as recommended by staff.
All right.
That was already moved and seconded.
All right. That's been moved and seconded, so that is the motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Can I make a short announcement?
Yes, certainly.
Just, just so you know, procedurally, this is a land use application, so quasi-judicial land use application, so ex-party rules still apply. Later on in the, in the meeting, we're going to get to a first reading of the ordinance for this. I've asked that the first reading be postponed till October 13th, so we can prepare findings for the ordinance. But if you're receiving communications regarding this vacation of rightofway, please understand ex-party rules still apply, so please try not to have those ex-party communications. If you, if you get them, don't read them. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Our next items, we have no special orders of business, nor any unfinished business. There are no information reports. And so with regard to ordinances and first reading, are you making a motion? Who's going to make a motion? Counselor Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to defer first reading of ordinance 21-14 to October 13th.
Second.
Is there discussion? It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. Is there discussion? No? All right. We'll move to the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no second readings. Is anyone here for public comment? No one has signed up for public comment, and we have no new business. We are adjourned. All right. Thank you very much, and I'm going to call to order this session, which is a joint work, joint work session between the Salem City Council and the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board. Welcome every one of you. And the format that we're going to use this evening in our work session is such that, as in all work sessions, we have a dialogue between, in this case, the advisory board and the city council members, and there are some staff here as well for staff reports and additional input and comment. Excuse me. During a work session, we do not take testimony or comments from others who may be in attendance. If you're here this evening and you wanted to advise the city council, we're always ready to receive written testimony, written comments, and also we have time in our regular council meetings when citizens can come forward and provide information to the council on items that are not on the agenda, but that they feel necessary and want to share that information. So we encourage people to do those things. So this evening, we have a format that we'd like to follow, and we would like to have each of the members of the advisory board and our special guest to introduce themselves, and then each person is going to have up to three minutes. You don't have to comment, but if you'd like to make a statement, up to three minutes, and then we'll begin the staff discussion, and then we'll begin the dialogue for our work session. It really is an honor for me to especially welcome into our chambers Tricia Smith, who was on the city council for a number of years. I remember sitting out in the audience and watching her there and being very appreciative of the years and the service that you gave. Thank you so much. We're so honored that you are joining us tonight. Thank you for coming back to be with us.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, and thank you very much for inviting me.
You're welcome. Would you like to start the round here?
All right.
Okay. And you can pull that microphone up, and probably the technology isn't any better than it was, so you have to raise your voice and really use the microphone. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I generally don't have any problem with that. And I believe these are the same microphones. Members of the council and the board, I, for your record, my name is Tricia Smith. I currently reside at 399 18th Street Northeast in Salem, in Counselor Bennett's ward. But prior to that, I resided at 2420 Edgewood Avenue Northeast in the North Gate neighborhood, two blocks off Portland Road, in an absolutely extraordinary house. If you don't know the one I'm talking about, you should drive by it. It's one of the treasures of this city, and one that I intended to die in at a very old age. Unfortunately, I was not able to stay in the neighborhood, so I had to take a sad step in toward one. Which is a wonderful place, let me tell you. It's a wonderful place, and I've got the best street in the ward that I live on, but I do miss my neighborhood and my house in North Gate. So, I didn't mean to start talking. I meant to introduce myself, and so, that's it.
That's fine. Yeah, and we will do the introductions, and then we're going to have a staff presentation. Then we'll come back and do the three minutes. Okay. Thanks. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Jeff Lewis. I'm new on this advisory board, as of September 10th, so I'm here to learn a little bit as well.
And if you're occupying a particular seat, I know for this board, there are some designations, a neighborhood person, a resident, a business owner, if you have that.
This is, I am representing a business large.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
I'm Jason Cox. I live in Ward 5, about three blocks from Tricia's old house, and I can tell you, it is as wonderful as she says. And I represent the residential neighborhoods adjacent to the urban renewal area.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for having us this evening. We're very grateful. My name's Don Russo. I'm the Chair of the North Gateway Advisory Board, and I've been on for about three years now. Don't have nearly the history of some others, but have found this fascinating to learn about, very unique part of our city. I'm also involved in the North, North Gate Neighborhood Association, and I serve as Chair of that group, our oldest neighborhood association in the city's history. And I live in the very north part of our city, off of Kale, up at the very top end, up there by PGE. Thank you.
I'm Kate Tarter. I'm the Vice Chair of Ingrab, and I've served on a number of different committees, city committees and other committees. I'm currently elected to the transit board for that area. And I recently rented an office downtown, and part of that was that there aren't very many coffee shops in our area where you can get internet, other than the Kroc Center that recently opened. So I did buy a parking pass. You'd be glad to know that. And so far, it's worked out very well.
I'm Alden Muller, and I live on Claxter Court. I sit a residential on the board, and I am the land use chair for the North Gate Neighborhood Association, so I have a real vested interest in Portland Road.
I'm James Firestone. I've been on the board for a couple of years now. I represent a business ownership. I own Salem Sound Center, along with my mother. We've been in and on Portland Road since 1977, so pretty long history at that location, and I've grown up there, so well aware of the history and some of that that's gone into it.
Thank you. What was the name of your business?
Salem Sound Center.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Joe Legley, I actually live in Kaiser, Oregon, and I have a rental property located in the, in the district. Also operated a business there from '96 to about 2009, and I'm on the Kaiser City Council, so I'm fully aware of the fun, fun ins and outs of urban renewal districts. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, and welcome all. We really do appreciate this opportunity. All right. We have a staff report this evening. Staff presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, members of the advisory board. My name is John Wales. I'm the Director of the Urban Development Department. And just to kind of tee this up tonight, I'm just going to give some, some background, what we've done, where we've come, where we are, and, and some thoughts about that you might want to consider for, for tonight's conversation. And, and starting there, what we're, we're hoping tonight is, although there won't be any decisions made, but there'll be at least a conversation that starts helping us, to give us guidance on the priorities, the desired incomes for the remaining $22 million of funding that's available for, for projects in the North Gateway area. And so the questions we're asking is, how can we best improve the livability, the mobile, remove the blight, stimulate sustainable economic vitality in the area? And is, if that, and if we can have that conversation, is there more information that's needed? And if there is, what would that type of information would that, would that be? As many of you know, this, this is, Urban Renewal Area was actually formed 25 years ago, back in 1990. It was created with some, some primary objectives, very broad objectives, but they've covered areas of property development, redevelopment, and rehabilitation, upgrading street amenities, and much of the focus from the very beginning has been on Portland Road as a centerpiece for redevelopment and rehab. There's been a focus in the plan objectives, also on livability, creating relation, interrelationships between the different parts of the, of the area. It's a very complicated urban renewal area with industrial, residential, and mixed-use development, and how can we create a more interactive, livable environment there? Utility undergrounding, improving visual appearance of the streets is also a focus of this, and again, a lot of that is focused on, was intended to focus on the Portland Road area as well. In 2000, the city council and the agency board recommended adoption. The city council approved the Portland Road Master Plan. In 2003, the first phase of the plan, because it was a large project and expensive, it was done in phases, I think, as most people know, the southern phase that really focuses on fairground roads up to the, up to the railroad underpass was designed in 2003, and it was actually completed in, in 2004. In 2000, also in 2004, as most of you remember, that the SOMCO company depart, left the area. It basically closed shop, which had an enormous impact on the finances for this urban renewal area, and specifically, a lot of, with SOMCO leaving, a lot of the tax increment and the opportunities to fund additional projects really was set back. And so there was a restructuring and a rethinking of the finances of how, how we were going to fund the projects in this URA. In 2005, there was enough money to finish Bill Fry Drive, and it was completed. In 2008, Portland Road environmental cleanup, you might remember that it wasn't just the road project in the, in Phase 1, there was also a substantial environmental issue that was occurring with contamination of groundwater from, on properties on both sides of Portland Road. And there was a lot of activity where the Urban Renewal Agency actually acquired property, cleaned it, and then turned it back into the market for sale. And the, the senior center, Hollywood Station, was an example of one of those properties. Cadel's property was, was an example of that as well. But in addition to the, with Hollywood Station, it also had the benefit of buying the, selling the old senior center next to the Salem Clinic, just for, it's actually out of the urban renewal area, but increased an expansion of development of Salem Clinic, which stimulated the, the location of Walgreens in the area and some of the other development that has, has occurred as well since then. In 2009, the city council and the North Gateway Advisory Board reaffirmed their commitment to Phase 2 of the Portland Road project, which was the, to finish the project from north of the undercrossing to Hyacinth Road, up at the north end of the URA. So, as part of- So, as part of, going back to SOMCO, as part of the restructuring of the finances, we have been, at the Agency Board direction, making accelerated payments on our debt. Between 2009 and 2015, we've been making essentially what have been double payments on our debt, so that we would free up enough capacity to create, free up the remaining $22 million of bonding capacity that we have, or investment that we can make. That debt payment will be paid in January of this year, and so we now have the ability to go forward with the investment for the remainder of the funds. Also, in last year, as a side, in 2014, we completed the improvements at the intersection of Hyacinth and Portland Road. You might remember that the Public Works Department, through its Streets and Bridges Bond, had money to do work on Hyacinth, and we came to the Agency Board several years ago and said, could we do some of the undergrounding that was envisioned on Portland Road at the same time? And we have done that, and that has been completed. So a portion of the project, particularly at that key intersection, has been completed. So where are we now? The original URA was started 25 years ago, 15 years ago. The original concepts for the Portland Road were developed, but since then, a couple things have happened. Unfortunately, while we've been trying to pay off the debt, the world hasn't remained still. There have been changes in regulations that have occurred, particularly in our requirements on road design. An example that we now have different stormwater requirements when we build roads with rain gardens and related to the design that have escalated costs. We've seen increases in concrete, asphalt. We also know that PGE has told us that our undergrounding regulations, or their undergrounding regulations have also increased, so the cost of this road are, have gone up. In fact, they exceed the $22 million that we currently have available to pay. In addition to that, our, the engineers that we've asked, just, and this, we haven't gone into detail with this, but in looking at the original plans and schemes that were thought for this phase of the project, it appears that the design was really oriented moving traffic through this area and not as a destination. And so it was really, when you looked at the, a lot of this had to do with the medians and whatnot that were put into the original plan. And so because of this, we thought it was important to step back and think, we're going to have to have some conversation around what can we do for $22 million? What types of, what are we trying to achieve with the road that we initially planned? And we thought we needed to step back and think about this. In addition to that, we met with the, and we've been having a conversation, I guess almost a year since last November, with the Agency Board and with the advisory board to say, if we're going to look at this and before we move forward with a million dollars worth of design work, we want to ask the question, is this still meeting the objectives that we all intended for this area? I don't think anybody disagrees on the objectives as far as what is in the plan and what we're trying to achieve, but there's an opportunity here to ask those questions before we move forward. And so we've had those conversations, and there's been differences of opinion. There are members of the advisory board in the community that just prefer just to proceed with the development that was planned and just move forward on that in that vein, and there are others that have said, let's step back and look at other opportunities, let's get more information and make sure we're making the best investment. All of the options included an improvement to Portland Road, it's just in what capacity and where and how. Because of this confusion and disagreement, we thought it was really important to get together and share that and to share, have the advisory board talk to the council and vice versa, excuse me, the Agency Board, and to have those discussions. And therefore, we're, again, suggesting tonight to try to answer the question on, what is the best investment strategy for the $22 million? But really, more specifically, how, if we took this up to a broader level, how can we best improve the livability, remove the blight, and stimulate the sustainable economic vitality for the area? And if we can have a conversation around that, and you can all talk, I don't know, any topic you want, this was just our suggestion, is more information needed? And if so, what type of information would you like to have in that conversation? From our perspective, we think this is a dialogue that's ongoing. I don't think we're going to have, resolve this in one meeting. We may have to have several, and we have to, may have to have several more meetings, which is perfectly fine. But with that, that's kind of the dynamics, Mayor, and I would turn it over to you. We have our staff here available from Urban Development for answer questions. We've got the public works experts that know the road quite well, and we're available for questions if you need us.
Thank you. Would you please introduce the staff?
Well, right here behind me is Doug Rux from Public Works and Director of Urban Development, Annie Gorski, who is our Project Manager in Urban Development, Jill Corcoran, also one of our project analysts at the, in the department, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Maybe you could just introduce yourself, Jim Bonnet, stand up, and Ralph.
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. With me is Jim Bonnet, our City Engineer, and Ralph Lambert, who's one of our Project Managers, and has been following the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board for many years, since its inception.
Wonderful. Nice see you over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking to the right, excuse me. And Glenn Gross, our Director for Community Development as well. Thank you, Glenn.
Wonderful. Thank you all. I really appreciate all of you being here this evening. It's very helpful. As in all work sessions, it's not a time for the council to take a vote or make a decision or look upon tonight as a final opportunity. This is really a junction in the process. And so with that in mind, I would like to ask each of the individuals here this evening, we'll start with Ms. Smith, if they'd like to make comments, and then we'll go from there into discussion with council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was involved in this from the beginning, and from the beginning and as far as I know to today, Portland Road has been the focus and the reason for this urban renewal district. It's the problem that brings all other problems to bear. And it's a problem for the neighborhood that lives nearby first, but it's also a problem for the whole city, because we think a lot, most people go down the parkway, but I work in the Capitol, and I can tell you that people that come to this Capitol Mall drive down Portland Road when they're coming into Salem from Portland. And I can recall a few years ago that there was a question about, why do all of these people live in Portland and work in Salem? Why don't they live in Salem? Well, probably because they drive down Portland Road, come to the Capitol Mall, go to work, leave work, go back out Portland Road, and they think that is Salem. So it's a gateway, whether it's the official gateway or not. It's still a very important gateway of our city. I became involved in this process, as did my neighbors, because we could no longer live in our neighborhood because of the crime and the blight on the road. When I started knocking on people's doors, asking them if they'd help me get the city to do something, I didn't know what. I had neighbors tell me that they tried to list their houses and couldn't list them because the Realtor would not take the listing. I can't sell that house, the way things are out there. Please don't let that happen again. I have been so pleased over the years to see the improvements to North Salem that have happened as a result of this urban renewal district. The changes to the Hollywood District are just extraordinary. They're wonderful. They're exactly what we hoped would happen when this was established. It is, it's a testament to how and why urban renewal works for communities when it's done right. And those of us who thought that the area between Hyacinth and the underpass was the focus of the process, were content to let the northern, the southern area go first because it took less money and it just made sense. But now, today, I hope that you will double down and redouble your efforts and not forget that that area between Hyacinth and the underpass is the reason for this urban renewal district. Many parts of the city and many individuals within the city have benefited from the urban renewal district, but the people who need it the most have yet to see that benefit. There is no place to cross Portland Road between Lana Avenue and Hyacinth, or between Lana Avenue and Bill Fry Drive. There's no place to cross the road. It's a neighborhood. We need that. When we.
I'm going to have to say three minutes.
Okay, then I'll just say that I brought you a survey that we did of businesses and residents on the road to ask what should be done. It says what they think should be done, so I'll leave that.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right. Would you like to be next? There you go.
Yes. I would echo some of those comments, even though I'm new to this board, I'm not new to Salem. I've been here most, my whole life, and I have seen Portland Road 25 years ago and the mess that it was, and it's improved. And the testimony that I've already read would echo the same thing. We've seen the Hollywood District and how nice that has turned out, and these folks have waited a long time. So from the underpass, moving clear out to Bill Fry Drive or Hyacinth and beyond, it could obviously use some improvement, and that's what I see that money for. Now, as far as not having enough money to do that, that's going to take some more work, I understand that, to vet that out, but I think that's where the money needs to be used. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Well, thank you. My wife and I are homeowners in Northgate, specifically on Duncan Avenue, just off Portland Road. Our neighbors are great. We have a great neighborhood. And one of the things that drew us to that neighborhood was the Portland Road Improvement Project and the business development that was going to follow. That was a major factor that convinced us to invest in Northgate. As has been stated, and as the record shows, the primary intent of this URA was to clean up and revitalize Portland Road. I understood that to mean complete sidewalks and other pedestrian bicycle safety upgrades, improvements, buried utilities, street trees, and things that will make Portland Road a place that's appealing for businesses and residents. That need still exists. That need has not gone anywhere. We've spent over $400,000 to buy right-of-way for Phase Two of this project. We've seen the success of Phase One, and we know that investing in quality of life works. Madam Mayor, you made an excellent point in the Statesman Journal a few months ago regarding, it was about the Minto Island Bridge, but I think it's a great general statement. You said, quote, "Employees of today and tomorrow are not looking for a paycheck. They're looking for quality of life." And that's because we know investing in quality of life works. It works everywhere we try it. We know Northgate has the highest density of residents without access to a car, and we know that the pedestrian infrastructure there isn't working. We know that the city has a lot of important plans in the future, and we know that the best way to keep citizens supportive of those plans is to keep the plans and fulfill the promises that have already been made. This is a good neighborhood, Madam Mayor and Council. It's a, it really is a great place to live, and if you stick with the plan, history teaches us it can only get better. That includes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Don Russo again, and as Chair of the Neighborhood Association and the North Gateway Advisory Board, I feel that there's been quite a connection between those two, that a number of the people here, my colleagues who have come to know and appreciate very much. We have common interests, shared values, we work together well, and we're just here in a good, positive attitude of trying to make this a better community for all of us. And with the long history that Tricia talked about, we support that and want to do as much as possible to fulfill what has been planned. With some questioning by engineers and others of, how is this really the best use of the money, and maybe it's not enough money? The one alternative that I'd like to bring up more from my own perspective, and not speaking just as Chair of both of these groups, but to see how attractive the Hollywood Station development has become is really impressive, and I didn't see it when it was in its worst of times. But I think there's a new opportunity that wasn't here at the time the Phase Two was developed, in that we have a new high school, a technical career institute coming in on Portland Road, almost across from the Rose Garden property, that sits in between a residential area to the east and industrial areas to the west with a major rail line and sightings. And that, the connection of those amenities and resources, to me seems like a major asset, a collection of assets that has some timeliness to it. And my ideal scenario would be, if students could go to that school, live in the neighborhood, and go to work behind in the industrial zone, that would be the livability, that would increase livability, reduce crime, improve the economic strengths of the area. And that's what I'm wondering, you know, like Hollywood Station, can urban renewal and all the other resources of the city and the different boards come to introduce some way that this can fit with these same goals? I attended, just a last statement, I attended the meeting last Thursday about the housing needs analysis and the economic study that the city has commissioned with Eco Northwest. And these goals, according to the Oregon Land Use Program, that the city's bound to follow, seem to lay right on top of this part of the North Gateway, where we have industrial lands that are maybe aging in some of those resources, but still have tremendous resource value with that rail line. We have residential that's aging and has low income and high crime, and we have bare land in that Rose Garden site. And I just think that those three together could be an opportunity that might be part of what our future plans become. And really thinking over a 20-year period, not just something really quick. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Kate, welcome.
Thank you. So what I want to talk about is the whole picture of the neighborhood and understanding the demographics. And today I wrote a letter about home and school, and I feel that everyone had wonderful intentions of putting a walk-only school in that neighborhood. Unfortunately, when the school district put a bus stop and a hazardous barrier, a child was killed, and then they removed the bus stop. So my concern is that maybe if people would have understood about the bus, the bus that was going to be at the school that we were told wasn't going to be there, and some of the other stuffs in the neighborhood would have been researched a little more, we wouldn't have maybe had a hazardous barrier with a bus stop on it. In hindsight, it wasn't a good idea. So my intention here is to say, let's look at the whole picture and consider the ripple effect on the whole community, because I believe everybody has good intentions when they say, we want a project that's about a destination, or we want to bring jobs to Salem. And I think that's great, but my concern is, much like home, and who would ever say a walk-only school is not a good idea? We all thought it was a good idea. I would think that was your intention. Unfortunately, once the implementation started happening, that's where the ripple effect is. And my concern is with the extra housing in the area and the people who walk in the area, if we don't take that into consideration, and what I see every day in that area is seniors with a walker and a four-year-old trying to get across Portland, somebody in a wheelchair in the middle lane, stopping traffic so he can get through across there. And now we're going to open a tech school, and I'm concerned that by driving more traffic there and not looking at the demographics and the whole impact that may come from a ripple effect, that once again, we're going to drive neighbors out of that neighborhood, bring up crime rates, and those are the studies. So that's my concern, is that everyone has good intentions, and I believe that everyone wants to do great things for that area. It's just that if we do not address the streets first, I feel we may be doing more harm than good. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, again, I'm Alden Muller, Land Use Chair for Northgate Neighborhood Association. And something that Ms. Smith said, you know, we talked about it being a gateway, and during the county fair, and particularly the state fair, because my front door looks right on Portland Road, and I see a huge increase in traffic, of people pulling horse trailers, and it is our gateway. And what are we doing to, you know, leave an impression on people from Bend or from Pendleton on what Salem is? That's where they get off, at 28, 258, and come right down Portland Road to get to the fairgrounds. Another comment I have is, I've talked to several businesses, and if, like the Epping property was. property was developed like we would like it to be, they would be excited about relocating their businesses in a mall there. One's a restaurant, one's a spa, one's a barber shop. The spa lady runs a thing, Dress for Success, to help, help women that are, you know, help them to dress, to go out and get jobs, and how to do their makeup. You know, I'm willing to go out and get more of them, but, you know, I got to know that we're going to do something. I mean, I can't just promise them pie in the sky. But there are businesses that would, would be excited to relocate on Portland Road. I think that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, and thank you, Council, for allowing us to be here. Again, James Firestone, had a business on Portland Road for many, many years now. Phase One was a great success in many, many ways. Did it address 100% of the blight in a lot of the areas? No, there's still spots around that area that have not changed. I look at the Phase Two project, and where some of this conflict has kind of come from, why we're even in this meeting right now, was the amount of money that was originally set aside, the 22 million, that is not going to get us to the end goal of Phase Two. As a business owner, we start to look at, we can't get what we need, so we need to kind of pull back, evaluate what we can actually do with the money, what's going to give us the best bang for the buck to get us where we need to be or to help in the situation. That's why we ask city employees to kind of give us some options as to what is the best use of the 22 million that's available, not so much that we were trying to steer away from the Phase Two goal, but just to evaluate our options as far as what can we do to get the most out of what we've got. I honestly think that the road improvements would do a great deal to help bring people into our city and help beautify the area. But also, as a business owner, know that as a business that's operating and functioning right now, that is going to put a major price on to the businesses that are opening and operating right now, having that road shut down or very inaccessible. I watched it happen on the Lancaster Market Street. There's lots of businesses there that either didn't make it or had to really go through some hard times. Once that's done, I believe that it's going to be a great success, but know going into it, from my standpoint, that that will probably put us out of business. But, I mean, in the long term, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilors. I first came to this board last year, about a year ago, November, and testified, told a story about the gut, which is where we used to travel. You guys remember this. It's 30 years ago, yeah, 30 years ago. We used to come down here in high school and cruise the gut, and it was, I think, an old grocery store or something at the time, and it became the Goodwill. Eventually, now it's the senior center. It was interesting. It was an interesting time. There was a dance club down here, Razzles or something, anyway. The city had a vision, and they made this urban renewal district. And they had a vision, they stuck to the vision, they took care of the first phase. And 10, 11 years ago, we were at my property working, and I wouldn't let my kids walk to Circle K, which is three blocks away. Today, I have no problem with that. Of course, they're 10 years older, but if they were that age again, I would have, I have no, no problem with them walking in the area that's Phase One. Phase Two, I have a problem with that. I still have a problem with that. On my way down here tonight, I followed Don Russo. I don't know if you noticed the police cars in the Nelson parking lot, the Nelson Manufacturing parking lot. There were three cop cars there, police cars, and they were not in the cars, so they were on foot, probably attempting to arrest a suspect, I'm guessing, or, because there's, yeah, a lot of activity down there. So I appreciate the commitment that the city of Salem has made to that area, and I think best laid plans, a lot of times if you stay focused and complete them, it'll come, it'll come true. And you look at, look at what you've done, and you have a proven history of what's been done, so appreciate all you guys do. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and have some discussion with councilors and see if there are questions and items that people would like to get out onto the floor, ask questions of staff, of one another. Anyone like to start? Counselor Bennett, member Bennett, I'm reminded, we are in the agency, we're not in the city council.
Thank you. One of the issues that I've seen raised in a couple of the emails I've received referred to an urban renewal levy that sounded like a property tax levy. What, what is that?
You may be referring to the special levy?
Yeah.
Yes, and Mr. Wells, would you like to discuss that?
It's a, North Gateway and also Riverfront Downtown have a additional levy or a funding source that was put in place, I guess back in 1995 or 98. When the state readdressed the way that urban renewal could be funded, a lot, some areas such as the city of Salem had urban renewal areas already open and had incurred debt. And so with the state changing the, basically, the sideboards on what you can, how you can use urban renewal, how you can use funds, how you can use tax increment to pay, the state made a compromise that everybody would be made whole with a special levy, and then in addition to that, any new development that would be, that would be occurring would be, would be addressed for, with tax increment. So it was a funding mechanism. So in this urban renewal areas, there's two funding sources. There's the special levy that was put in place to make us whole, and then additionally, the tax increment that was, that's used to fund projects as well.
So everyone that has taxable property inside the urban renewal area boundaries pay a levy per thousand or pay some amount per thousand?
It's, it's based on the city, is that, yeah, I'm going, you know what, I'm going, we have a resident special levy, Doug Rux, and I'm going to let him explain it, because he will, he will get it, I think, more accurately.
Doug Rux, Assistant Director of Urban Development. So back in May, sure, 47 and 50 times where urban renewal agencies had existing debt that was in place, part of the statutory revisions to that created this thing called a special levy. It was to ensure that urban renewal agencies could meet the existing debt service they had with the restructuring of the overall tax structure within the state of Oregon. So the special levy is actually, is something that's calculated by the county assessor, and it applies citywide. So it's not just within the urban renewal. So when you get your tax bill on an annual basis, and you'll see urban renewal that's on there, because city of Salem, we have seven of them, it's how they calculate, and they have to drill all the way down to the individual property calculation level, and that comes back up, and it's really, it's the overlapping taxing districts is what we call them. So the school districts, special districts, the city, and so forth, all are for giving that, but the county assessor has to calculate that all the way down on each individual property for everything in the city, and then it rises back up, and then those taxes are foregone by those other districts.
So there is no special urban renewal levy that I don't pay, that someone in this neighborhood, I mean, they pay, I pay, we all pay?
You all pay.
We all pay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank the advisory board members for coming out tonight. I really appreciate that you're here and that you're offering your thoughts about this. Thanks for taking time out on a Monday night. I kind of want to follow up on the question the Counselor Bennett asked regarding the special levy. It's collected, does it go back into any particular area, or is it kind of like SDCs where we collect them from certain people, but then it just goes into a pot that can be used anywhere else?
It comes back, in this case, it comes back into the North Gateway urban renewal area, so it's part of the tax increment collections.
So, so does that mean that, so what's collected from everyone or just from the people who live within that area?
Everyone.
Everyone in the whole city?
Yes.
Okay.
Member Bednarz.
Real quick question for Doug Rux. I just, a real quick question, you said the debt is to be paid off as of January of this year. You mean it was paid off or is paid off?
It will be paid off in January of 2015.
Thank you. It was the year, it was a whole year difference. I actually had five questions, no, four questions beyond that. I'm hoping a few things might come to mind. I'm thinking of, well, I'll just start with the first one. What about Mission Street? You know, Mission Street had, basically, you ran across the street, there were some islands that were placed out there, and more and more, they've added more islands that are relatively, I'm going to say inexpensive on gathering, because it's just concrete on top of the asphalt, to help with the crossing across Portland Road. You have islands of vestige.
Counselor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. We've installed one crossing island on the three-lane section of Mission Street, and it works very well. There's other medians that were installed by the state of Oregon on the state highway piece of Mission Street east of 12th that also worked very well. So those, those crossing islands, we've been installing them all over the city, they run about $50,000 apiece when done individually, and we, as traffic engineers, you know, highly endorse them.
The issue to me is that 70% of the dollars that were allocated in the total maximum indebtedness were spent more or less on the south end, south of the, of the underpass. I'm sure money went into planning for the area to the north, and I'm trying to figure out how to get that last 30%, the biggest bang for the buck is really what it comes down to. And I'm trying to think of, of things that would happen or work well for that section. Islands is a relatively inexpensive way to make an improvement, so when people are going to school, they can get across the street, and you don't have this void of crossings between whatever it is, Lana and Bill Fry. The other one is, I, you know, after chairing the West Salem Urban Renewal Advisory Board, one of the things that we came up to, we couldn't, couldn't afford to underground the utilities, but we, at the time that we did all the digging up and all the other stuff that we were doing, we decided to put conduit in. So conduits under the ground, ready for undergrounding utilities, because we couldn't afford it. But it was a way that we got it in now before the, as we were repaving everything. So it's just another way to maybe save some dollars to get some work done along the way. And I guess the other comment I heard about the gateway was the importance of gateway appearance is really important to the city of Salem, because people come in either to the state capitol or to the fairgrounds, but I think it's even more important to the neighbors, the people who use the area, the people who are invested in the area. And that might speak more or louder, why aren't there more investors? I've encouraged, at least we did in West Salem, the redevelopment advisory board, bringing in real estate agents to talk to the board so that the board could learn what were the hindrances from a real estate point of view, a Realtor's point of view in the area. What was hindering that person from selling or leasing, whether it was commercial or residential? But you get the man, the man who's sitting, whose feet are hitting the ground right straight off, and he's informing you of their opinion, but it gives you some ideas to work on. So those are, oh, and the last one I had was, at least in the, the idea was, west of the I-5, I'm sorry, west of Portland Road is all industrial land, east is going to be a mix of commercial, mixed-use, residential. Has there been any thought in reference to rezoning the area to the west of Portland Road to commercial retail or commercial general to soften the transition between industrial that's down below in the Cherry Park and the rest, remainder? Been thought about, but nothing's happened to it at this point. Those are my comments.
Thanks. Okay, the question about rezoning probably would be a good one for Glenn Gross, if he would like to make a statement about that, maybe the city has looked at that? I don't know.
Hello, I'm Glenn Gross. I'm the Community Development Director. To my knowledge, we haven't studied that. That would be a, an example of, you know, if we were to do a neighborhood plan, for example, for that area, that, that would be the kind of thing that we would do then. But in my time with the city, which has been here 10 years now, I don't recall any kind of in-depth analysis of the zoning of the area.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Member Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to, full disclosure here, that when you come, you always surprise me when you come to meetings like this, and James Firestone, I went to school with your mother. What do you think of that? Anyway, my questions, I actually wrote staff a letter this week asking for some cost estimates of what it would cost to grind and replace and make the street look like a new street with sidewalks and the whole thing. So I think staff's prepared to talk about some of that estimating tonight, and also talking about the undergrounding of what parts should be done, or how utilities can go on one side of the road and join, share poles. And of course, Jeff and I, we can argue about that, but that does happen, it happened in West Salem, and it happens quite a bit. So those are opportunities that I think we can look into, and if we have to leave the overhead, and maybe we do some undergrounding on crossings and things like that. So I've asked staff to make some comments about that if, if this is appropriate time.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I appreciate the questions in advance so we could think about it a little bit. You know, in response to the question of what would it cost to rehabilitate the asphalt? So, and I guess I should, I should back up. You know, there was a whole master plan done for Portland Road that included, and that got to about 90% design. So it was really pretty far along in the design, practically ready to bid, and in the year 2000, all of those elements were estimated at about $19 million. I'd have the $18.9 million, so that's in 2000 numbers. Our estimate is to complete that project with all of those elements, today would be about $26 million. So, so that's to kind of set the baseline of, you know, the whole, the whole project. If we wanted to take elements of that project, so for example, if we simply wanted to rehabilitate the asphalt, so a repaving project, we'd scrape off the old asphalt, we would repair soft spots and the like. From the north side of the underpass to I-5, we estimate that that would be between $9 and $10 million. In that $9 or $10 million, we could probably, and these are very rule-of-thum numbers, so I see a lot of people writing, you know, until we kind of redo the estimates, this is really just to, for discussion purposes. That could probably include some of the small media treatments that Counselor Bednarz was talking about. It would not include all of the median treatments that the original master plan had called for. There are a number of areas that have missing sidewalks along this area. That $9 to $10 million estimate, you know, might include, did, did, did include the sidewalks? Yeah, so, so that would include the sidewalks as well. So, so, you know, some amount of sidewalks, some amount of, you know, the ADA ramp rehabilitation that we now have to do with, with every project, you know, bring those up to standards, do the sidewalks in a couple of key locations that, that would have the median treatments. Beyond that, if we wanted to underground the crossings and reorganize the utilities on one side of the street, and a good example of that idea is Wallace Road, north of Orchard Heights, ODOT did that. There was a request to underground utilities. When that road was done many years ago, there was, there was enough money to do that, but ODOT did reorganize the utilities on one side, underground the crossings, and then the council established a no overhead utility zone on the street itself, on the crossings. We would have to estimate what that would be, utilities don't pay for that, but that would be a way of, of bringing a piece of the element where everything would be underground, but at least the crossings would be underground and the utilities would be, would be reorganized. I don't know what else is in here. That kind of gives you a flavor for, for, you know, we had already acquired the right-of-way, I think somebody mentioned that, so. There are new stormwater standards, so with this project, we would have to include some amount of new stormwater treatment into the, into the project.
Peter, could you talk about maybe an estimate of, you know, islands is a good idea, I think, but also these things you see on Lancaster and you see it on 12th Street, the safety-
Right.
-on-demand crossing lights?
Right.
Are those expensive?
No, those run about $20,000 apiece, and they could probably be a part of, of those things. Certainly, the new high school that's coming in, we'd probably want to consider having one, you know, to support that location if there's, you know, I don't necessarily think we need them everywhere along the, along Portland Road, but if there were locations that are supporting a school, that are supporting something where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, then I think, you know, we would want to consider installing the beacons at those locations.
Thank you.
All right, I know I see Counselor Tesler's hand up, and I apologize, Counselor Tesler, you had your hand up quite a while ago. So we will move to you and then to Member Clauston.
Thank you. I think I need to have longer arms, really long arms. So I just wanted to comment that I used to work up there off Cherry Street, and we experienced the joys of El Bruyense, which is an excellent Mexican restaurant that is right underneath the over- right underneath the overpass of Death, as we used to refer to it. There was, I used to drive over there pretty frequently to eat, and it was always packed, and there was always a lot of people there eating because it's an excellent restaurant. And Chang's is excellent. And the other place that I go to a lot on Portland Road is Salem Fire because they do the hydro tests on your scuba tanks. So that's the only place in town that you can go to get that. And you installed my car stereo. And so I find myself going up there for business, and I recently was in Seattle, and there was an interesting part of Seattle called Soto, which is south of the downtown core. And there's another little park called Georgetown, which is right behind Soto. It reminded me a lot of Portland Road. But the differences were that there's a lot of artists living in this area, and there's a lot of people, there's a lot of warehouses, there's breweries, there's kind of like vagabond-type breweries scattered in there. There's a lot of art stuff. There's funky coffee stores. There's people doing weird metal sculpture things. There's really cool murals that some, some of them look like they gave people a bunch of spray paint cans and said, "Go at it," but they looked great. Just, there was a, there was that industrial vibe, but there was that kind of, people were there, it was a destination because there were things to do there. There were, there were things to do and things to see, and, you know, there were studios, there was that kind of a thing there. And when I think about what could be done, I think about, you know, what about just some simple streetscape? What about, you know, having people put up awnings outside their buildings? What about just people keeping their places clean on Portland Road? I mean, some people really try, and some people don't. And, you know, if this tech high school is going to come in, you know, we should probably start thinking about maybe some things that high school students would like, like coffee or, I don't know what high school students like. I guess coffee and frozen yogurt and things like that, or somewhere they could do their phone. But I'd kind of see some things that could be done that wouldn't cost a lot of money that would really improve the entranceway. I mean, I think road is great, and eventually we should think about these big expensive projects like that. But can't we do some sort of lower-budget ticket items on these businesses? And maybe these $20,000 crossings, they're good, but on 12th Street, I still see people bombing through them, which worries me sometimes. But, you know, I think we could do some low-hanging fruit, and maybe that would just instill, start to instill that sense of community pride and ownership. Because right now, when you drive down Portland Road, it's dark up there at night. There's really nothing open there at night. It's, it needs, it needs some flower baskets hanging off lampposts. I mean, I know this sounds ridiculous, but I really believe that this kind of simple things can change an area. When you see people out in an industrial area in Soto where everything is warehouse, and you see people out hand-watering their flower baskets, there must be something okay with that kind of buy-in. And maybe we should just start there. I mean, maybe we should start with some real simple things like that, and then think about the big stuff like grinding the road and putting in sidewalks and doing all these other things. And I really agree with these pedestrian, we've gotten a lot of email, and I really agree that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there. And we should definitely address that first. It's an area where people are walking on their feet. So let's do sidewalks, let's do bike lanes, let's do those things that people need there first, and then let's go with the transportation stuff. But I just, I mean, you said you had $22 million, and I'm thinking, how much would it cost to do some awnings and some flower baskets and some little gentrification-type things along Portland Road? Is that something, and this is my question to you, is that something that people would like? Would they buy into that? Would that work? Do we need to have this giant road improvement project to make it better? I mean, what kind of seeds do we need? What do we need, and how do we grow them?
I see a couple hands up. I'm going to let Kate Tarter go, but I also want to come back to Member Claussen and then Member Bennett. Kate?
The person that owns a business on Portland Road that did take this survey and is not here tonight, so I won't quote him, but since what he said is part of the reason why he wouldn't take the monies for improving the area in front or change out his front is because it's the right-of-way, and they're waiting for the city to make the changes, and just waiting and waiting and waiting. And they felt if the, once the decision had been made about the road and the right-of-way, then they could come in and make some changes. And so they didn't really feel they had the onus to do that and have it be ripped back out.
Can I speak to that as a business owner?
Sure.
We're in that same boat where we're in that area of not really doing anything because we weren't sure what's going to, there's no reason to invest the money if it's going to be torn out. Because where our, the city ordinance is, we had to have a garden-type area, flowery area, grassy area, whatever you call it. Now it's just been trampled through so many times that, and the things get just destroyed. So we've pretty much stopped maintaining it. And then at this point, we're now waiting to see what the road project's going to do to actually invest back into that spot so that we don't put money away that's going to be gone.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Member Claussen and then Member Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two quick questions for staff, to be honest, and they're very basic questions. One, how long are we talking about in terms of miles from Portland, or from the underpass to Hawthorne?
8,000 feet.
How far?
8,000 feet.
So mile and a half approximately. And then is, what is Portland Road classified as?
It's a major arterial.
Major arterial. And what are the requirements of a major arterial?
Well, it's pretty much what you see out there. You know, the standard cross-section is, you know, five-foot sidewalk, bike lanes, you know, one or two through lanes of traffic in either direction and a left turn lane.
One or two, okay. And then do we know how much missing sidewalk there is out there? On the, specifically, I'm more concerned about the, I guess that'd be the east side, just in terms of curiosity.
Yeah, so along, the area around Cigget Creek is where the bulk of the sidewalks are missing.
And where exactly is the school going?
The technical school, I don't know.
We don't know?
Yes, we do know. Annie can point to it on the map.
This is the Epping property that people were referring to. I can zoom in.
Oh, so it's going on the west side?
Yes.
Okay. That's a good building for it. As a side note. Okay. No, that's interesting to help give me a little bit of context for how much we're talking about. And do we have a general estimate for undergrounding? I mean, we heard the $9 to $10 million, and I know we've got the Salem Electric PGE conundrum.
Yeah, no, we do not have an estimate for that. So that's something that we would need to put together. If there was going to be a, well, we'd have to reestimate the whole project if we wanted to move forward with the whole project. But if we, if we wanted to do this reorganization, underground the crossings, then we'd have to do the work on that and work with the utilities to understand what the cost would be of doing something like that.
Okay, thanks. Just as a thought, maybe for staff, I think that would be helpful if we had a little bit of breakout of what some of the things are in terms of prioritization. But on a question for the board, I know part of the reason why we're here is because, shoot, was it last November already? We were talking about what's going on, and I think we had the first inkling that we didn't have enough money for doing the whole entirety of the project. And council, we were in a, some sort of a work session, and we said, hey, let's kick it back to the board and see what they think about maybe doing some other things. Couple of things that were kicked around were the completion of Salem Industrial all the way up to Hyacinth, things along those lines. And I, I'm seeing a whole lot of support for keeping on Portland Road, and I don't have any issue with that. I agree with the whole fact of it being a gateway, and boy, it is a road that could use some beautification to help with the area. That said, though, I wonder if there could be some discussion once some of the numbers come back of, hey, if we could pick apart a little bit of this. Connectivity in an area of town, in my opinion, makes a huge difference, makes a huge difference. And I don't just mean the main streets going north and south. South Salem is connected to North Salem very well on commercial, but only commercial. And connectivity can make a huge difference as we go. And, you know, we've got big issues coming from south to north because we have existing neighborhoods that weren't planned for the traffic that was going to need to be with the development of the UGB and how much development had to go to the south. And I'm not saying that's anybody's issue because the UGB changed a whole lot for us when we started that development out that direction. But I'm wondering if some thought has been made to, if there's a little bit more connectivity on the east side of the road to be able to get north, if that's realistic. I don't even have any idea how much money we're talking about, but I don't know. I'm, connectivity is a big deal, and it's a big deal for businesses, it's a big deal for residents. If some more of that traffic were able to go north, some of the business traffic, maybe that would make a difference as opposed to just hitting out on Portland Road. So I don't know. It's a question I think we'd ask to go out, but I don't know if I ever heard a response back, or so I missed it. I don't know who would want to field it.
Okay, I think we'll move to Member Bennett, though, and get his question out on the floor or his comment.
Well, I, thank you. And I join everyone in thanking you for coming down. I thought this survey was really interesting, just looking at what it is people want. And it starts with sidewalks. It doesn't start with redoing the roadway. And part of my question is sort of, what's the condition of Portland Road that would require it to be redone within the next 15 or 20 years? I mean, is it in that kind of condition, or is it, is it a roadway that can be kept up and we can focus on sidewalks? Or await the bond issue, your planning?
Right. As you know, we don't really maintain a lot of our asphalt. So this is a road that could probably use an asphalt rehabilitation.
But wouldn't this normally be done through a bond measure like street?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, sure. This is another source, you know, as your public works director, you know, I see,
You don't care where it comes from.
I see pavement rehabilitation, and hey, there's a pot of money, and that's, isn't that great?
Well, that's what, and you're hitting right on it for me, is that we have, we have found a pot of money to pay for this road, but I'm not sure that fixing the road relieves the blight. It fixes the road, and it probably would give us the sidewalks and a better drainage system. But what they're asking for here is sidewalks, bike lanes, a grocery store, and everybody wants a grocery store. I mean, I understand that, but that area in particular. And those seem like, I mean, I think there's a certain amount of real value in what's described here because what it describes are the kinds of services, basic services that neighborhoods need. I mean, Tricia and I are lucky, we have Safeway. I mean, we are, got to be the luckiest inner-city neighborhood around to have Safeway serving us. We've lost QFM, we've lost other grocery stores along the way, but this, this has really stabilized that neighborhood. And that seems to me to be one of the big, the big issues. I mean, I like the idea of coffee shops, sit-down restaurants, I'm not, I don't know. That's, but signal crosswalks, things like that. And what I'm wondering is, can we do parts of this, phase it in, do these parts that actually result in making that a more user-friendly road in advance of the bond measure or whatever you're going to get to ultimately fix Portland Road? Because what's eaten the money out is this redo on Portland Road. There's actually quite a bit of money if you drop that project or set aside a percentage of it for ongoing, I don't know if you can do maintenance, but ongoing improvements, you know, sort of protection of the road while we wait for the money.
Sure. And any of these elements can be done separately. I mean, we can, you know, we just did a bunch of sidewalk work right out here on Gayety Hill. The pavement there is terrible. The sidewalks now look great. So we can certainly just do the sidewalks or look for key locations and just do the median improvement so that there's pedestrian safety, you know, for crossings, or just do the, the utility crossings or the utility, the utility reorganization. So any of these elements are severable.
Yeah, that's what I
And can be done on their own.
Yeah, and that, I think, is what we're kind of missing as we try, and the board has been kind of missing as they try to talk their way through this, are what do some of these pieces, I mean, the infrastructure piece, you can't, it's hard to price out a grocery store. But, but the other kinds of pieces, the moving, moving utility lines together, maybe not varying until you go in and actually do the street, but the sidewalk continuity, the kind of, the use of this right-of-way, it's so unfortunate to have $400,000 worth of right-of-way sort of going unused and in fact proving to be an impediment to business improvement and not being developed. It'd be interesting to see that as a laundry list. And you get the feeling that if you, if you could see all of it, and it's, and it sort of costed out, that there may in fact be dollars left to create some increment as well. And that's the part that worries me, is that we'd spend all the money, we're out of money again, and retire, retire the, whatever, we do pay it off, but that we will miss the opportunity to also do some tax increment that allows this to be an ongoing improvement district in a way.
Right. And that's when we brought the issue to council about this time last year.
Yeah.
Is we were about to spend a million dollars of this money on a road design and thought, it's been so long since we really looked at this, maybe we should have a discussion about, does this still make sense? Is it the right thing? Is it what the redevelopment agency board would suggest? Is it really going to bring livability and remove blight to the extent that the neighborhood would like? And as Kate Tarter said, I think everyone has the same intention as to really do what we can to improve this area. So how can we use this, how can we best use this money to do that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would really help me understand it because this, this improve the road, it's gone. In fact, there's not enough there to do it, it sounds like.
Well, there's enough to do some aspects of it now. And so I think it's really trying to get to some generalized sense of what, what would be the best to do that brings the overall area up, you know?
So it helps me, I guess, ask the board kind of the question about, is that what you want? It's just a new row, mile and a half of asphalt? Because that, when you say, and maybe it's just definitions, but Portland Road only kind of, well, it sounded to me like you wanted a road job.
I'm going to jump in, though, because I've been very careful to let everybody have a chance to speak, and I have several points. We are going to end at 8:30, so we have 20 minutes, and I'm going to be really watching the time and watching whose turn it is. And maybe if some people have spoken quite a bit, I'll ask them to just hold off and let others speak. There are a couple of things that I have a question about. The first thing I want to just be really clear on, on this statement on the survey, just so I really understand this concept, that the businesses and residents want to get what they paid for. How much have they paid and how did they pay it? Is this through the tax increment that is the money that's been paid?
Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
Mr. Rex?
Doug Rex.
Yeah.
I think what they're referring to is the tax increment that they've paid for their property within the north Gateway Urban Renewal area.
And so are we certain that the tax increment that's been paid since this opened actually is going to provide, has provided the amount of money that this plan was designed for? Or did we design something that we never were going to be able to pay for?
That's a challenging question. You know, when the Urban Renewal District was created, there was a model that was done, and it looked at all the projects. There's a long list of projects in the north Gateway area, and cost estimates were done at that point in time and the estimated year when those projects were, would occur. Over the last 24 years, the projects have changed, the list has been modified, we continue to collect the tax increment plus the special levy amount after 1998. to collect the tax increment plus the special levy amount after 1998. And moved forward, projects within North Gateway, and as Mr. Wales had indicated, accelerated the paydown of the existing debt that was already in place that will end in January of this year. So in January of this year, it provides this opportunity that there will be tax increment revenue coming in, just the tax increment side, we believe, to do, to help pay for debt service for some project or projects that you're talking about tonight. So there will be additional dollars that will be coming from businesses that are located in North Gateway to do improvements within the North Gateway area in the future.
Do we know what that dollar figure is?
I do not have it directly in front of me, but I think the tax increment side of that is a little over $2 million a year.
Uh-huh, okay. I just want to be certain that we have enough money in the sugar jar, you know, to pay for what it is that everybody's been planning and hoping for.
Well --
Because I understand that when Sumco left, then there was a change in the tax increment revenue, right?
It went down, yes, significantly.
Right. But the plan didn't change. Nobody went back to the plan and said, well, we don't have that money now, so we need to change the plan, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that.
But what, and I think part of this is, part of your discussion as you advance this is that we, at the staff, will go back and look at our revenue projections, look at whatever type of project or projects are discussed, look at that and say, okay, how much we come in on an annual basis, how much could we go out and enter into debt for, what would that number be, to see if they're feasible or not. But right now, we're not to that point.
Right, okay. I think that's good, though. I think it's really important that we know for sure just how much money we can anticipate as we go forward. So that was one of my items. A second item is, and I know, we've been talking about it at the city as well, the comments about the high school that's coming. And now we're, and now a high school is coming, and I heard Kate say, and now we're putting in a high school. The city isn't putting in a high school. The chariots isn't putting in a high school. But the city and the bus company are going to have some ramifications from that. And it has, I believe very strongly that the city has got to sit down with Salem-Kaiser School District, with the board or some proper authority there, to have a clear understanding of what the school's needs are going to be, what the school is going to be doing as their part on that property. Because there are going to be some very definite responsibilities that we're going to have simply because a school is going to open there. And I don't want us to shirk our responsibility, but I want us to go into this sort of eyes wide open. And I wondered if staff could talk for a minute about when a high school or a major school is being cited, what does the city do? For instance, when West Salem High School was planned, what did the cities, what was the city's role and how do we look at that property and that project? And what do we do as a partner with that?
I think Peter can talk about it from a public works standpoint and Glenn can talk about it from a planning standpoint.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, so I'll take kind of the backend because there's kind of a citing part that Mr. Gross can speak to. So when a new development comes, is proposed, whether it's a school or an office building or a subdivision, there are certain development exactions that are required to address the impacts on the existing infrastructure. So Mayor, you mentioned West Salem High School. So when West Salem High School was developed, they put in their water, their sewer, they addressed stormwater, they built portions of the streets that were out there. So that's a greenfield development. In this case, that building exists already, so by law, it is very difficult to exact, to require anything additional from the school unless they are, for the school district, unless we determine that they are creating an additional impact on the system. So in this case, there's, you know, a building, the building is industrial, so it already generates so much traffic, et cetera. So I don't know the details of this development, but we, you know, anything that, it seems to me, just on the surface, that anything that we're going to do out here, the school district's going to provide voluntarily, not because we can exact it from them, require it from them. So it's something to keep in mind.
Okay. I just always have in mind what happened when the Social Security Administration decided to put an office building in the middle of an industrial area. And guess who ended up having to scramble and apologize because we didn't have sidewalks?
That's right.
Yes.
Now, the owner of that building, the owner of that building paid for that sidewalk.
Right.
So, I mean, it was, it was a good deal. But you're right, so same kind of situation, existing building, an office building, a service is put in a place that doesn't have sidewalks, and then, you're right, then we're the ones that had to scramble and address things. So in this case, we would want, and the school district's a good partner, so we're going to have to work with them. And they're going to have to do some, they're going to have to do some things voluntarily. We're going to ask them to address some of these issues. But it's, but my guess at this point is that it's probably going to have to be voluntary, that we won't be able to require it of them, so.
What kind of timeframe would we be looking at on this project?
Well, those kinds of things are done prior to building permit being issued. So those kinds of requirements would be addressed, you know, prior to, as they start to submit, you know, whatever plans for redoing the inside of the building. I'm not allowed to jump in.
Big segue, thank you.
I have a, yeah, I have a degree in planning as well, so.
But it sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like months, right? Sounds like months and months?
No, no, I don't think we're talking about months. One thing to keep in mind is there's a little bit of a difference between what happened in West Salem and this particular situation. In West Salem, we were talking about, first of all, we're talking about building new schools on undeveloped land. Also, that was pre-UDC, Unified Development Code adoption, which changed the procedure somewhat and more or less streamlined the procedures. Where here, we're talking about an existing building being changed to a different use. And so the review is administrative, and if it meets, if the proposal meets all of the clear and objective standards, it's pretty much the same kind of process as just applying for a building permit. So very straightforward and fast.
Like fast months?
Fast, no, like, two or three weeks.
Would it go through the planning commission?
No, it does not go to the planning commission.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, no.
Okay.
It's administrative, this is a staff review. If it's, if it can't be done just with the clear and objective standards, then it would go to a, a public notice would be sent out to the surrounding property owners and an opportunity for comment and potential appeal, but only on appeal would it go to a public hearing. Otherwise, it's still administrative. And we're talking about the most evolved process, that would be like 45 days. If it stays on a simple process, which is right now, that's the track it's on, it would be a matter of two or three weeks.
Oh, okay. So that building now is zoned?
Zoned, IC, industrial, commercial.
Uh-huh.
And that does allow educational services.
Cool, okay. Kind of like when, well, not the same when IT Technical went in in South Salem where G.I. Joe's was. That's different.
Well, that's a different use, I think, but it's a similar situation in that they're both allowed uses and they can be permitted outright.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, well, that's, those two things are helpful. And my last point that I want to make is having a plan for the road, for the reconstruction of the road, the improvements of the road was the plan, but I'm wondering to what end? Was there something, is there something in the plan? I haven't read the entire plan. Is there something in the plan that says the road will be improved so that what happens? And I guess I'm looking maybe to staff as well as the people who were involved when this plan was made. Is it just we build the road, we spend the money on the road and then there it is? Or are we doing something in conjunction with that that's going to create jobs, that's going to spur investment, so there is a place to go and have the coffee or have a professional service or whatever? We've got the Epping property that, when I came into office, that was the first thing I did as a result of requests, let's get the overlay zone pulled off of there. We did that because we were told, oh, grocery store's going to come and this is going to come and that's going to come. Nothing, nothing's come. So I'm concerned about we do things for what? And I'd like to see a little, have a little more cause and effect rather than just cause. I'd like to see a return on the investment of the money as opposed to we spend the money. Mr. Wales, you have something to say?
Madam Mayor, I think that's the crux of the whole conversation tonight, actually. As you know, in the urban renewal plan for this area, there are lists of projects, and we can only spend money on what is, what is a project in the plan. The Portland Road has been a project in the plan from the very beginning. And because, and over the years, over the past 25 years, there've been a series of projects, as Mr. Rex said, that were built and developed, and others have changed because of the Sumco issue, some of the, because of the funding sources. It was the policy of the Agency Board and the recommendation, I think, of the Advisory Board since 2009, that the last plan in this urban renewal area would be this road. And that the culmination of all the projects that have been done would be to bring completion to that plan. And basically, this urban renewal area will close when the last $22 million is expended. That is our maximum indebtedness that we can spend and that's it. That's why this conversation started, was we know the road alone, the costs have increased to the point of where we need to rethink that. And in rethinking that, we're asking the question, is this, it's about leverage. If you've got $22 million, what is the most strategic investment to create the outcome that we're all hoping for, the vitality, the safety, the livability? And the question, I think, and the policy question that we're going to need to wrestle with is, is that the road? Is that the road and a combination of some other stimulus? I mean, remember, the southern portion of the Portland Road wasn't just the road, it was a strategic investment on Hollywood Station to leverage your urban renewal money, city money, and the private sector to invest in a project that brought not only the senior center, but also brought residential units and brought a commercial office building as well. That was a catalyst. There's not enough money in the URA or the city to complete and transform Portland Road to the, into the total vision of what we'd all like to see. So the question becomes, what is the most strategic investments that we can make that will, and most likely, the road is a part of that, if not, maybe it's all, maybe you decide it's all. But what are those, what are those strategic investments? What are the, are there any other catalytic projects that we would want to reserve money to leverage with a private development or to acquire property? Or what is that that we would want to do? So I think every, and I think the question has been, should those projects be limited to the, to Portland Road or the whole URA? And I think what we're hearing today very clearly that the focus and the preference is to keep those investments on Portland Road because that really has been the centerpiece of this URA since it was established. The question's, what's the best return, exactly the return on the investment? Does the road alone do it? Probably not. But there, but that doesn't mean there aren't elements of that that could certainly meet these objectives, but balanced with other investments. And those are the questions that we're talking about. What is the best use of the, basically of this funding that can give us the maximum return? Because once it's gone, it's gone. Once we spend it, we need to, so we need to think it through, and it may be a phasing, it may be all at once, but we need to have at least an understanding of what is it that we're trying to achieve and does that project get us there? Or a group of projects get us there? And those are the, that's kind of the chunk. That's where more discussion, I think, is needed. And we had talked about, or where we had brought the Agency Board and to the Advisory Board, the concept of going at, take stepping back, taking a few months to do an economic opportunities analysis. What would some of those investments be and what order could they go in? Very similar to what we've done in downtown with our strategic plan. We have done this, we've done this in West Salem, too, to help organize our thinking is where are we trying to get and what sequence and in what priorities are we going to, going to attack this? And that's, that's the kind of conversation. So your question really is right on target is what we're trying to discuss here.
So with this project, it's only a road project. It's not also funding for, to stimulate investment like certain types of grants or toolbox loans.
Right.
Those are available separately.
Well, that's part --
Because we've been talking about those.
Part of the maximum indebtedness. You can think that we've got $22 million left to spend in this urban renewal area. The question is, how do you want to allocate that and to what? You can put it all into the road, which is perfectly, and it will have the hope of creating other investments. But as Mr. Fernandez said, we know the road's going to cost 26 million, so we need to step back and think what elements are important to have in a road. We also would have the question, would it, is that the best use to stimulate the type of vitality that we would like to have? We know that this is an area that the market has not chosen to go in freely. We know that it will need help in order to, or some kind of partnering or leveraging to bring it there. We know that that works in the south end of the road because we know that when we leverage URA money with a partner, private partnership, we can get some really very cool developments. And should that be a part of this conversation? Yes. So the question about do we need more information, what information should that be? That's what we were, where we were back in June as to, should we go out and take the time before we jump into spending a lot of money and not have a clear vision of where we're going, try to organize what are the opportunities that we could put along Portland Road and in what sequence? And what would be the return on that, return on that investment? The issue that we were confused about is to whether that should be just on Portland Road or the whole URA. And again, I said, I think it's clear that the conversation is moving, no, keep this investment on Portland. That's what I'm hearing anyways. I'm not sure if that's where everybody.
So I just want to be clear. So if we put $22 million on the road, which isn't enough anyway, but if we did that, then we don't have money to do public-private partnership leveraging.
That's correct. There's no money, there's no money for any other, that's the end of, that's --
There's no money for any, no toolbox loans, no toolbox, I mean, grants.
That would, that would be the end.
That would be the end?
Yep.
Well, so much for putting together the plan for the toolbox loans, which I thought were really going to be helpful in that area. Because they've certainly helped in other areas, and I think maybe there've been some already made. Yeah, yeah, I think so, okay. All right. Well, I appreciate being able to have a chance to really get those out, those questions and thoughts out. Now, I know that others were waiting to speak. Counselor, Member Dickey, and then Member Benars.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will be brief because I know we're coming upon 8:30. So I just did want to make a comment, and this speaks a little bit to what you were saying, Mayor, is that one of the things that has concerned me, some of you have heard me say this before, I have lived in the neighborhood for 16 years. And during that 16 years, I have seen, I live on the very north end near Dawn, and in that 16 years, I have seen my neighborhood grow, develop, lots of houses come in and businesses coming, leaving Portland Road. And, you know, that is a little bit counterintuitive because these are, you know, this is how we get to downtown Salem. I don't take the Parkway to downtown Salem, other than I think Kaiser Station probably has had something to do with that. So, you know, there's been an investment there. And so one of the things that I'm particularly concerned about here that I think would also help is some way to retain businesses along Portland Road, not only bring them in, but keep them there once they're there. We had some great businesses that actually served the residential areas. We, and we had a building supply store, we had a furniture and appliance store, we had at one end, just barely outside of the area was a Kmart. You know, these things are all gone. Now we have flea markets, thrift stores, you know, and I'm not quite sure why that's happened, but we might be able to use some of our funds to bring some of that vitality back and provide jobs and, you know, and serve the neighborhood all at the same time. So that's something that I would hope that we could get out of this ultimately at the end while we're doing the improvements to the area. I think that would be a good thing as well as bring in maybe some more needed housing. One of the things that came in, since this plan was developed, we have the CROCK Center, which serves fans. which serves families, and we've talked about that, that's on the west side of the road. Catholic Community Services is there, that wasn't there when this plan was built. I think, well, the ESD was there when this plan was built, but now it actually probably serves families more by the use it has now. The building and the ESD is not there anymore. So, you know, I think things have changed, and so I think there are opportunities to use our funds to bring some revitalization, whether that's, you know, working on the road or the road in a scale-back way in conjunction with some of these other things, because I think it's really important. And it really is a gateway. People really do use Portland Road to get to, especially to the Capitol, get to the, to the State Fair, and there's things going on at the fairgrounds all year round, so it's definitely something that's used. And I think there's a lot of opportunity, and I just really appreciate the discussion that we've had tonight.
I do, too. It's very good. Now, let's see. Member Ben Arz, I think you had a question.
Real quick question, and this may be a little, a little bit more esoteric, but if we have only $22 million left in indebtedness that we can, we can borrow against, is there no way to increase that amount, one? And is, would you have to start the whole URA all over again, basically? It sounds like, once you get done with the $22 million, you're finished, that's it, couldn't be more?
Doug Rux. Yes, there are ways to extend an urban renewal district. There's a provision that was written into law in 2009 that allows you to do a 10% increase over your original maximum indebtedness, and it was allowed. The premise of that was, when you got to the end of a life of a plan and you had a project and you were just short on funds, is that you had the ability to do an increase, you didn't have to get the approval from all the overlapping taxing districts in order to be able to do that. There's another provision in statute now that allows you to go beyond that, above that number, but you've got to get 75% concurrence with all of the overlapping taxing districts. It's a long and arduous process, but they are on, they are in ORS 457, and that's something that, go further in discussions if you want to talk about that. I can do some, a little bit more research and do a summary sheet of how that works.
Otherwise, you let it expire and then you're-
Otherwise, you get to your $22 million maximum indebtedness, and then you're done. And you close your plan.
After you pay it off, yeah.
After you pay off your debt first.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Well, thank you very much. I know we are just a little bit over time. I really do appreciate everybody's involvement, everyone's willingness to come and do a work session with us. It's very helpful. I have a feeling this will not be our last work session. I think we have a lot of work ahead of us to come up with a plan and to be able to execute on that plan. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate you being here tonight. And thank you to the staff also for your input and participation.